There we go. So, a few housekeeping things, I've said a couple of them already, but let me reiterate, you've come into this meeting with your microphone on mute. That is so that it's easier to hear our speakers when they're talking. But don't worry, we do have time scheduled at the end for a Q and A. And I will walk you through exactly how you can ask questions and raise your hand so that I can unmute your microphone if you want to ask out loud, or you can always chat your question in. Either way will work and we'll go over that again at the end. There are going to be one or two times that we share slides during this call. You'll see at sort of the top right-hand corner of your screen, a button that says view. During that, if you want to change the view of your screen, you can do speaker side by side. So you'll see the slide and you'll see the speaker next to them. That is what, those are all the housekeeping things that I have to share. For now, I'm going to turn it over to our incredible board chair Julie Lieberman to share some updates and a couple of other things with you guys. So Julie, over to you.
Thank you, Leah. Welcome, everyone. We're delighted that you're here tonight for our town hall. And we hope that tonight's program will allow you to hear about the wonderful things happening at Jewish family service, as well as provide an opportunity for you to ask questions and share feedback with us. Speaking of wonderful things happening at JFS, I'm excited to tell you about our dream court. If you haven't heard the news, over the years, our JFS clinicians have asked for new play therapy tools, more play therapy rooms, and opportunities to get their clients active. With a gift from the Nancy Lieberman charities and the David family, we added a basketball half-court to our property over the summer. Aside from the obvious benefits of physical health, active play therapy like basketball is known to improve emotional wellness for children. When clinicians use our dream court with their clients, they will be able to build skills in self-awareness, emotional regulation, stress management and communication, process grief from a loss in a healthy way, and increase overall happiness. Studies have shown anxiety and depression can be addressed using active play. So we are proud to provide this therapeutic option for our pre-teen and teen clients. Also, the 11th annual diaper shower is happening right now. I am proud to have founded this event with my friends and co-chairs Beverly Russell and Kathy Glick over 10 years ago. You might not realize that items such as diapers and wipes are not covered by food stamps. Not having access to clean diapers results in poor health for children and impacts a parent's ability to send their children to school or daycare while they go to work or look for employment. Since founding this event, we've collected almost 1.2 million diapers for distribution from our food pantry. We have satellite drop-off sites throughout the community and an Amazon wishlist to allow donors to ship infant through adult-sized diapers straight to JFS. I will share the website in the chat later with more details. And thank you in advance for helping us serve the community in need. None of the amazing things that happen every day at JFS would be possible without the collective work of our community. Therefore, I would like to take a moment for a few thank yous. First, to our volunteers and donors for their ongoing support. JFS could not do any of this without you. A special thank you to our longtime partners at United Way of Metropolitan Dallas and the Jewish Federation of Greater Dallas. To the JFS board members, both new and returning, who have continued their engagement despite the virtual nature of our board and committee meetings. I appreciate you. To the JFS staff for their incredible work over the past 18 months. We already knew that they were outstanding professionals, but the way that they have stepped up to meet this moment and serve our mission has made me very proud to serve as the board chair of this amazing agency. To our agency leadership, Kathy Barker, Chief Executive Officer, Daisel Sarte, Chief Operations Officer, and Steve Brown, our Chief Financial Officer. Thank you for all you do. And finally, thank you to all of you that are here tonight, who have taken the time to join us to support and learn more about JFS. It's now my pleasure to introduce the CEO of JFS, Kathy Barker. Kathy?
It helps to unmute myself. Boy, you would think it being in this virtual environment for the past 18 months, I would have learned that lesson already, but that's okay. I'm still teachable. Thank you, Julie, very much for all your kind words and your leadership. I mean, she, I have to say, she is just absolutely the best board chair there is. I want to start this thing by talking about the fact that we will talk about thanking everybody for making more possible when it all seemed impossible. It's, it's a saying that we started out with. I think it came up in one of our marketing and development committee meetings when we were talking about what is it when we're thinking about our donors? And what is it we're thinking about the way the community has responded? And it just naturally came out that way that all of us, you know, have experienced COVID and the pandemic in the way that we have. And it's all been personal in many ways. And we've seen how it's affected the community. And all of us have faced times when we weren't really sure what to do. And we weren't really sure what the future would hold. And we weren't really sure what we could do to respond in our own ways. But what I have to say is I sit in a position here at the agency uniquely and then I get to talk to you guys and I get to talk to our staff and I get to talk to the community. And that's why when we say making more possible when it all seemed impossible, we are faced with these crazy challenges, but that's what this community does. And that's what we do best is that we rally together and we figure out what it is that we can do to solve these unique challenges. And boy, has this past year been an absolutely unique challenge. But you guys, as Julie pointed out, donating, volunteering, sitting on committees, sitting on our board, calling and checking on our staff. Those of you who have done that, y'all recognize that what we're being called to do is unprecedented, not just for us, but also in the type and the nature of the work that we do. Social services, mental health services, getting people jobs, serving older adults and everything. We're at the core of what needs to happen during this pandemic because everybody has been affected in some way like that. I will say that our largest requests this past year have come through emergency assistance. You've heard us talk about that, our food pantry, obviously, mental health services. So much so that in a usual year, we might serve around 14,000 individuals. And I have to say that for years, we thought that was a really big number because we serve people unduplicated. So when you hear us versus other organizations talk about our numbers, these are unduplicated. And you have to remember that since we provide wraparound services, each of these individuals has averaged three services if they're coming to the agency. So this means they may be coming to us for food, for a job, for services for their special needs child or for an aging senior in their home or to get a job. So we do a whole lot. And as y'all know, those of y'all who are with us all the time, we help people for as long as needed and we're committed to that. So this past year, we served a record number, 39,000 individuals. It just boggles my mind. The one question I get asked the most this past year is how did you do it? And I'll talk a little bit more about it after I give you this very special treat of hearing from our frontline people yourself. Because these are the people who have the heart and the passion for the work that we do in and out every single day, pandemic or not, they're here answering the call for help. And I think it's important for you to hear the types of services that they're providing and their response during this time. So I'm going to do some introductions. I would like to please welcome Debbie Weiner, who celebrates in December 30 years with our agency, I have to say, our Senior Director of Older Adult Services. Ariella Goldstein, who is celebrating, I think it's 25 or 26 years. And I'm sorry, Ariella, if I get that wrong. But she is our Senior Director of Clinical Services, Robin Gormley. Our 13 years, I'm just going to keep going with all these years here. But Senior Director of Hunger Relief and Emergency Assistance, Kristin Lobenstein, who is celebrating a few years, still good time, you know, with us. She's a career and financial services coach. And then Ruth Josenhans, who has been here as long as I've been here. She is the Senior Director, which is about 10 or 11 years. Senior Director of PLAN, which is Planned Living Assistance Network. So what I'm going to do is introduce each one of them. They're going to talk for about five minutes apiece. Just give highlights of what their program does and anything special that they have done in response to the pandemic. So please enjoy. I will first welcome Kristin Lobenstein, who will speak to you about our Career and Financial Services Program. Kristin?
Hi there. I'm really happy to be here to talk about CFS or Career and Financial Services. But the name of our program has always been a little misleading because it really should be Career and Financial Coaching Services. Because coaching is really what we do and who we are. We saw the complete impact of our program this past year as we began working with our clients remotely and connecting with them in seven webinars per month. And that doesn't even include the webinars that we participated in with our partners, Attitudes and Attire, Dallas Public Library and the LinkedIn Who You Know Show. And that's just to name a few. Through our webinars and those of our partners, clients and community members, we're learning how to create the best resume, the importance of networking, interview skills, webinars devoted to navigating LinkedIn, managing debt, connecting budgets to pay and salary negotiation. All said, we impacted the lives of over 2,200 people last year, nearly double the amount from the year prior. Another thing that happened this past year was our need to bring our computer courses online. And Phil Konecki is our awesome trainer. He does so much for JFS and he created a virtual program for Microsoft Office classes, including Excel, Word and PowerPoint. And he hopes to add QuickBooks at the beginning of next year. This program has become so popular, he is now participants throughout the United States, Canada, and most recently, Israel. In 2020, we were invited to participate with JFS Houston and Austin in a financial empowerment study through Notre Dame University's Lab for Economic Opportunity, or LEO. This three-year study was launched this past February to examine the impact of financial coaching on a person's financial life and future stability. More to come on this. Through our effort to partner proactively with more financial institutions, we also created a monthly financial education webinar series. This enables community members to learn more about the different aspects of banking, homeownership, entrepreneurship and other banking products. We are very focused and committed to presenting the community with alternatives to payday loans, which is a very big issue here in Dallas. The program launches this month, actually towards the end of this month. Before I tell you a success story, I would like to give a shout out to some of our awesome coaches. Superstar Jason Hopper, our LinkedIn expert, has the hardest time keeping clients, mainly because he gets them working so quickly, and that is the truth. Mitch Jacobs has been our amazing social media blaster, making sure everyone in the universe knows about our webinars and programs. Luciana Jackson is leading our efforts with the LEO project while helping her clients every day become debt-free. Bill Konecki, as I mentioned, is our ETO guru and our office trainer extraordinaire. Allison Harding is our fearless leader, helping us power through even the most difficult of times this year. And me, I'm a financial coach and a blogger and will soon be offering a new coaching program to the JFS lineup, Life Coaching. So on with the success story. We have so many, but I only have time for one. And Allison and I talked about who to present, but this one was particularly exciting. So this particular client came to us right before the pandemic because she was considering changing jobs and she needed some direction and someone to talk to. So we connected her with a career coach. And as always, when you have a career coach, you're connected to a financial coach. And it turned out she also had $9,000 in debt that was really weighing on her. So then all of a sudden, she started with us in March and then the pandemic hit and she was furloughed from her job and she absolutely panicked. Her career coach immediately started working with her to help her get some form of employment while she waited. And she was able to get a clerical job and this was full-time. And then she ended up working there for nine months. Well, during that time, she also took another part-time job to make up the difference in her salary. Then her furlough job opened back up and at one point she was working three jobs. So over a 13-month period, she paid off the entire $9,000, which if any of you have experience with debt, I do, I'm a financial coach, that's really hard. And she did it in the middle of a pandemic. She worked with her JFS coaches the entire time. She always had people to talk to, bounce ideas off of, and we're all accountability partners for her. So this was all her diligence and her hard work for sure. But with JFS's coaching support, she stayed employed the whole time. She built up her emergency savings and became financially stable once again. We are so proud of her. I want to say thank you so much for listening to our story. And as you can tell, Career and Financial Services is very proud of the work we do here with JFS.
Thank you, Kristin. We are very proud of the work that you guys are doing too. And that was such a wonderful presentation. Next up, we have Debbie Weiner, who is going to share about older adults.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. I'm so excited to talk to you tonight. You know, the past 18 months have been both challenging and enlightening. We started with a set of assumptions that many older adults could not and would not be able to take advantage of technology. We were wrong. In mid-March 2020, we began reaching out to the older adult clients that we work with over the phone and we started conducting telephone sessions. This was effective with some people, but not all clients. When the agency obtained the use of the Doxy.me virtual platform, we decided to see if some of our clients might be willing to try it to see if it would be helpful to them. And we learned that everyone is capable of learning and developing new skills, regardless of their age or abilities. We even have a 101-year-old client using a tablet. We're very proud of that. Now, some people may need a little bit of help from friends, neighbors and family, but it is possible. We found that Doxy.me was very helpful for a lot of people, but we were still concerned about the impact of social isolation on so many of our clients. We learned about Uniper, a special combination of equipment and programming that turns a television into a virtual senior center and video phone. We applied for a grant to obtain the service for clients and was awarded one from the Jewish Federation of North America and the National Jewish Human Service Association. The grant targeted Holocaust survivors and older adults affected by trauma. We have served 69 people with those services to date. So our counseling in case management programs evolved into virtual and phone sessions with home visits only in extreme situations in an abundance of caution. Our kosher home-delivered meals program evolved into weekly deliveries and we experienced unprecedented growth in the number of meals delivered. In the past 18 months, at times, we were able to add breakfast and shelf-stable meals to the frozen meals already being delivered. And in that period of time, we delivered 24,164 meals. And in the past fiscal year, we delivered 18,786 meals, an unprecedented increase in the number of meals delivered from past years. And to put this into context, in the year before the pandemic, we only delivered a little less than 9,000 meals. In fact, I'm really very proud to say that our clients did not miss a single delivery during the pandemic due to a very dedicated staff and group of volunteers. Our Friendly Visitor Program was revamped and expanded to better help our clients cope with isolation. Our support groups evolved into virtual Zoom groups. Our Holocaust program expanded due to the addition of Dr. Yafa Podvylevich Weinberg. Her expanded outreach finding many more Holocaust survivors in the community than were previously known. And due to the addition of grants from JFNA and CAVODE, we secured a grant from Toyota for a van and a driver, which will allow us to bring back and expand our former transportation program. As with the other programs at JFS, we changed, evolved, and came up with a kind of hybrid model of service delivery that I believe will forever influence the way we provide services to the community. I'm very proud of the way that JFS has adjusted and accommodated to current circumstances. And I'm really very excited about the possibilities for the future.
Thank you, Debbie. Wonderful presentation. Appreciate all that you have done and continue to do for this incredible program. Next up, we have Ariella Goldstein. Ariella?
Okay, can you hear me? All right, wonderful. So I want to say first of all, thank you to all of you who are on this Hollywood Squares, but it's JFS Squares. And I wanted to say thank you very much to Julie and the board for all the support that they have and continue to show the support to all our clinicians for the work that we do ultimately to serve all the clients, the community at large, the Jewish community and anyone who comes through our doors, whichever door they come through. We accept, we take care of them, we love them and we do it tremendous. Whatever we do, we do with a lot of dignity. At the same time, I want to also really send a very heartfelt thank you to Kathy and the chief team, Daisel and Steve, and foremost, our incredible staff, without whom we could not do what we're doing, without whom we cannot tell you all the things, all the accomplishments. And it's not, not been easy. This past year has been tough. It's been a challenge for everyone, including ourselves. You know, we're forgetting, we too are in the middle of this pandemic with everyone else. So while we had to pivot, and that's Robin's word, I love that word, and we had to evolve and develop in all our services, we also had to learn self-care. And it's always a fine balance, but we are really are accomplishing it, that as well. There are many, many services under mental health. We know that mental health, in my opinion, is like a common denominator in every aspect, whether you're working with employment, you're working with food pantry, you're working in emergency assistance, you're working with families, with older adults. Whatever we do, internal and external, mental health sort of is like the context of so many people's lives, families, situations, et cetera. We serve in general, for those of you who don't know, we have programs that treat children and children and families from special needs, from trauma. We treat adults with chronically mentally, mental illness. We work with families who come with family violence on all levels and complexities because it is a very complex situation and a complex concept to really wrap one's head around. So our staff is very trained. We have psychiatrists, one is and works with adults and teens and one works with children part-time, but we'll take whatever we can because it's a huge support and a huge service. We work very closely with the schools. And I want to put a say, a real shout out to the Jewish Federation because the Jewish Federation has been so supportive in our efforts to reach as many children with special needs in the Jewish schools across the board. And they recently have funded a position for a school psychologist or a diagnostic evaluation psychologist to do testing in all the Jewish day schools. That position is open, we are interviewing for it. So we are eager to get that started, but it's a huge... I'm yeah, I'm mute, okay. I wanted to also say that whichever door a person comes in through JFS, we will do everything we can from crisis intervention to sending them to the wraparound services that you're hearing here tonight, to our own family and counselors, families, trauma counselors, whatever is needed, we will envelop the family with tremendous dignity and respect and do everything we possibly can to help the clients. I can go on and on and I, it will take up too much time, but I want you to know that we take everything very seriously and we will help anybody in need for as long as needed, as Kathy mentioned. And thank you for listening and I'd be happy to share more if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ariella. Wonderful presentation. And one of the things that she would probably say is that the, one of our most difficult things right now is finding clinicians because the mental service is so great. So if you know any friends, family members, colleagues or have connections around the community, we are hiring in a multitude of positions so that we can be as responsive as possible. So thank you, Ariella. Next up, we have Ruth Josenhans to talk about PLAN and the PLAN Clubhouse. Ruth?
Hi, everyone, and thanks so much for being here. I look forward to telling you a little bit about what we've got going on. I just want to reiterate what Ariella says. You know, we, we're kind of a unique program and the unique adjunct program of JFS. And quite honestly, not every social service agency would have the guts and fortitude to support the program that we have. I'm actually speaking to you from our clubhouse, Planet 1121 Rock, where, which is a unique facility that is geared to help folks with severe and persistent mental illness. And our entire program is geared to support folks who are struggling with severe and chronic mental challenges. One in 25 people, Americans, will experience a severe mental issue that will take them out, that will keep them from being able to fulfill the usual things that we want to fulfill in life, relationships, work. And this program really helps to get folks from isolation to engagement. We work specifically with folks with schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, major depressive disorder, and some folks with autism. Our clubhouse is an accredited clubhouse, we're the fourth in Texas, that offers folks an opportunity to work together to, again, move from isolation to engagement. We make meals together, we plan social events, we have an 1,800 square foot garden that we tend to. And it's just an amazing hive of activity. And as you can imagine, when COVID hit, all of our side-by-side activities ended and we had to, as Robin says, pivot to something different. And so we kind of created the work order day at home for folks and it became an opportunity for people through specially scheduled conference calls to be able to create a work order day at home. And we were able in that way and are continuing in that way to sustain our community. And that's been an amazing, amazing thing. Something that's happened this year that's been super exciting is that we received a grant from North Texas Behavioral Health Authority in order to expand some of our services to help with case management and peer support specialists. Peers are absolutely one of the waves of the future. We're finding that peers are some of the absolute best folks to help others on their road to recovery. They use their lived experience to help people live better and more active lives. And so we've been able to hire a case manager and three part-time peer support specialists. And they have such great experience. One was a director of nursing at a hospice care. One was a, worked at a hotel as a security... One was a, worked at a, a hot, a hotel as a security, a head of security. And we have someone else with a master's in psychology. And just the quality of folks we've been able to get to help our community has been amazing. Um, and that's our Plan Connections program. Our third program is our Plan Family Support Group. Individuals who have family, families who have individuals that are struggling with severe and mental, severe mental illness are really folks that are desperate for assistance. And we're so grateful, while we don't always have all the answers, we do have a place where you can come and talk to each other about resources and about what it is that you're experiencing. So again, just so grateful to be a program of J F S, to have the support of the agency behind this very unique program. And we're looking forward to growing with perhaps a housing program in the near future. And I'm sure we'll be able to talk to you guys about that someday soon.
Thank you, Ruth. Wonderful. She always has such incredible information. And if you ever want to see a community garden in action, they have the coolest garden over there at the playing clubhouse. And you can always reach out to Ruth, and they love, the members and Ruth love to give tours. And it's really a program that you need to see in action. So even if you wanted to come over, join them for lunch or something, just reach out to them. Go see it for yourself. It's just an incredible program. We're so honored to have it a part of our services that we offer. So we are going to wrap up our service presentations with Robin Raxlin Gormley. And many of y'all know and love her face, probably seeing it all over the place with our food pantry expansion. Robin?
Thank you so much, Kathy. And it's really a pleasure to meet you tonight. And so I am Robin Raxlin Gormley, Senior Director of Hunger Relief and Emergency Assistance, and the creator of the word pivot here at J F S. But it, there's a real reason for that. You know, the pandemic, the pandemic really changed everything. And our program specifically really shifted, and we had to shift in a really fast way to really serve the needs in our community. This past year alone in our emergency assistance program, we distributed over $5 million of emergency assistance to families in need, families and individuals, from housing, making sure that people did not get evicted, making sure people could avoid the eviction process, keeping them housed and safe, and also keeping the lights on. That was a real big theme as well. In, on top of that, we had the winter storm. So there were many, many different areas that we were serving with emergency assistance. We partnered with the city of Dallas, Dallas County, Collin County, for all the CARES Act, Jewish Federation of Greater Dallas for housing assistance. There were so many collaborations that we did to be able to serve and distribute over $5 million this past year. And it was done through our incredible intake department who worked tirelessly in answering the need and answering the daily calls, Carrie Nottingham and her team. Yes. Yeah. In regards, big time. In regards to hunger relief, we all know, we've all seen, we had to shut the food pantry down when the pandemic happened. Why? Because we were already outgrowing our space. We, it wasn't safe to serve people. So we created this drive-through distribution line, and it's been running this past year. Listen to these numbers. Over 20,000 individuals were served in our drive-through line, over 2.2 million pounds of food were provided in our drive-through line, over 500,000 diapers, wipes, and more diapers that are coming in through the diaper shower. And we were able to purchase through this incredible diaper fund. Was essential for our families in just band-aiding the situation and being able to manage on a weekly basis. And none of this could have happened without our incredible collaboration with our Director of Volunteer Services, Kristen Jackson, and all of those volunteers who give their time every single week, who come in rain, sleet, shine, heat, from our staff to our volunteers that provide so much service with dignity and heart outside in a very complicated logistical stream that we have managed because this team is just so incredibly dedicated to streamline and make it this well-oiled machine when possible, without weather elements and other elements. So it's been a really incredible experience. But the best part of this is I have exciting, wonderful news to share. You know that we've been embarking on this food pantry expansion project this past year because we know that the client choice model is the best model in fighting hunger and food insecurity. The dignity in, in individuals and families having the choice of what they need for their family is the key in fighting hunger and food insecurity. So I'm happy to say that construction is winding down, and we are reopening in our new beautiful, dignified, warm, wonderful environment, caring environment, Thursday, December the second. That will be when our doors finally open to our clients, when, when we can get back to that client choice model, when we can see each other and be with each other. I know the volunteers are so excited to get back into the pantry. I know the clients are too. And I know that, that whole notion of shopping, just like in a grocery store, in a spacious environment. We acquired over 3,000 additional square foot, square feet of space. We have everything on one floor. We can get deliveries and the distribution at the same time. We can serve more people. We've expanded our zip code service because we don't want to leave the drive-through people behind. So we're getting more of a reach into our community. This is a very exciting time right now for the hunger relief program. And I implore all of you to spread the message. If you want to come volunteer, if you want to come take a tour, please reach out because this whole, this is about community, and this is about us helping each other. And it is community and all these collaborations that made it, made it more possible for us in being able to provide these incredible services. And the one last thing I want to say, on top of the food pantry reopening, we are launching the Food Pantry Jewish Hunger Initiative, Community Outreach Initiative, with our incredible Hunger Relief and Community Outreach Manager, Maya Cohen. Stay tuned to learn more about this, but the goals are to really extend our reach into the Jewish community and ensure that if there is a family in our community that is in need, we're creating those chains of access so they're not only getting food, but the services as well. So stay tuned for all of this, these exciting developments. And thank you so much to everybody.
Thank you, Robin. So do you feel the passion? Does everybody feel the passion in these people's voices? I mean, they just, we have the most incredible staff. I don't, I don't even know how to follow up, you know, after Robin, but I will try my best. I'm gonna help you guys feel passionate about our strategic plan. So I'm going to give you a little bit of information about that. One of the things from all of what you heard, believe it or not, behind the services, our board and our staff have thoughtfully put together a plan for our future. That is important. As an organization, we have to know what our path is forward. And so we have several board members on this call. I want to give a huge shout out to them for working with us tirelessly to put this plan together. And I'm just going to give you the high level overview, and then we're going to go to Q and A. But what I want you to hear is that this plan was actually in motion and being developed for a long time before the pandemic hit. It actually was approved in January of 2020. So we had all the strategic objectives I'm going to talk to you about were approved in January 2020. And then just a few months later, the pandemic hit. And so we had a lot of decisions to make as an organization. And what we decided is we had to keep moving forward. We are needed more now than ever. And so it's not like we can stop, you know, these different things. And so I'm going to go over them with you just briefly. But our strategic plan, as you can see on the screen, is built on four different pillars. The pillars focus on different areas that we found to be where critical needs were to help the agency get where it needed to go, so that we could serve better, do better, have the capacity, and all the things that we need to do things well, and like how you are accustomed to us doing in the community. The first being to improve access, the second to create sustainable and supportive systems, third being to build community, and the fourth to engage people. So I'm going to share a little bit about, but what does that mean exactly? The first one, the first pillar under improved access, it's focused on capacity building around what it is that we do with our service offerings. So some of the things you heard about tonight, the food pantry expansion is one of our strategic objectives so that we can do more and serve within a dignified manner, the way that Robin talked about, through our food pantry. The next is our capital campaign, and we've sort of started talking a little bit about it. If you read the TJP, you'll see that we even put out there that we're looking for a capital campaign director. We do need your help finding that person because that's that perfect person to join our team. But that is going to give us the capacity that we need and the space that we need to expand and continue to serve and meet all the requests for assistance that we get. Another part of improving access is understanding how we serve our clients. So actually surveying them, coming to understand what it is that we're doing well as an organization and where we can do things better. Everything that you heard tonight is that our services are client-centered. And so they're first and foremost, the ones who are going to help educate us on what it is that we can do well. And then another example is centralizing our intake services. As you can imagine, if we're talking about 39,000 individuals, even if 20,000 of them came through the food pantry this past year, that's a lot of phone calls. That is a lot of people, some continuing their service, services with us, and then some new clients coming in. And then all those people, that $5 million worth of emergency assistance, we had to respond to those requests. So it was important for us to streamline and centralize our intake process, which is sort of that first door of where people come in and access everything at the agency. The second part of improving access is improving productivity in our service delivery areas. A couple of examples are we hire case managers for all of our different service areas so that they could expand the capacity of our clinicians, like when you heard Ariella talk or Debbie talk. It's important because the work that our therapists were doing previously, which is important as a part of the therapeutic process, but they were also having to spend their time connecting clients to resources, making phone calls on behalf of the clients. And so instead, we were able to hire case managers so our therapists could respond to more of the one-on-one therapy requests that were important. And then also, we're focusing on better tracking our services and continuous quality improvement. The second pillar, creating sustainable and supportive systems. I mean, as an organization, every year, we have to raise the funds in order to operate. So that means grants, your contributions, collaborations and partnerships, like you heard spoken about by our different directors. But we feel like we can do better ourselves in thinking outside the box a little bit. But most importantly, we should find a strategic way for us to do more with our clients. Remember, we're client-centered services and also address in a holistic manner. So we have begun the process of completing a feasibility for becoming a federally qualified health center. So that would add medical services or medical clinic to our other wraparound services. More information to come on that. We hope to make some big announcements in the spring, but just wanted to let you know. And if you have questions about that, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd love to share information on it. But that will provide integrated services, which means people can not only get their food and their jobs and everything at the agency, but from a mental health perspective and a medical perspective, medical issues don't occur in a vacuum. Mental health issues don't occur in a vacuum. A lot of times, one impacts the other. And so we know this is a best practice approach to care, which is why we're looking at it. It will also create a sustainable funding stream for the organization in case funding changes year over year, which it often does. We are evaluating and analyzing all of our existing funding streams. We do this every year. We are good stewards of your funds. We know that you're investing in our organization, and we take that very seriously. Additionally, our strategic objective is to get a minimum of three, three months worth of operating reserves with a maximum up to six months of operating reserves, which is like our emergency fund for things like a pandemic or other things like that. And then finally, for the capital campaign I mentioned, we will work to secure capital and endowment funds, which are extremely important to sustain this organization long-term through J F S and in partnership with our very critical J F S foundation. And then with PLAN, the program you heard Ruth talk about, our focus is on sustaining it long-term by finding funding partners like the North Texas Behavioral Health Authority, like Ruth is talking about. And then also, we want to secure and identify a long-term housing solution for PLAN members as another objective. Our third pillar is building community. One of the things that I will say we get compliments about, and we have those members on this call with our wonderful M C Leah Guskin. We also have Jamie Dennison, who is on this call, Stacy Coe, and then Kristen and all her team, and Maya and Robin, talking about what we do out in the community. You can't build awareness if you're not talking about it. And so I will say that all of our marketing materials, our social media posts, the blogs that Kristen Lowenstein was talking about, those are different touchpoints where we're telling our story, and then we're also creating awareness and helping that community to find ways to engage with us. Because if we're not doing things like this town hall and talking about it, how do you know how to help us do our work? In the capital campaign, we will be looking at establishing new branding, and that will happen alongside that. Not anything to scare you guys with, but believe it or not, our, our little, they call it our scary door logo. We're just going to look at that, you know, give it a little bit of a second look. Maybe there's another way we can show open door to those in need without the creepy door. And then our focus is on improving visibility in the community with J F S behind being experts that we're seeing in those professionals, high level, our accreditation, charity navigator ratings and everything. But you have to know that our staff, as you heard tonight, are sought-after subject matter experts in the community between trainings, blogs, hosting workshops, everything around what it is that we do. They're highly regarded and sought after. And then the fourth pillar is engaging people. And this is my heart is, is around our staff and around what it is that we do, not just for the community. But as Ariella and several of the other folks talked about, what is it that we're doing to help keep them feeling engaged, supported, secure, and valued, which they are. But you know what? We still have to do that as an employer. I would love to be the employer of choice in this community. Many of them, you know, they are here a really long time. So you did hear that. So it sounds like we're doing something right, but we can always do better. So we are working on a culture of excellence program. So one of the things you should know is this started with us making a strategic decision to not do any layoffs during the pandemic. Some nonprofits had to make that choice, and our board plugged ahead and said, we need to be here more than ever. We need to be adding staff. We need to be adding services and responding. And that was a tough choice. Unfortunately, we were able to do it but through your help and the dollars that you sent in and getting a PPP loan and us accessing every single resource that we possibly could. But our staff are very appreciative for that decision. And then also, as you heard, giving staff the tools that they need to work virtually, to have the computers and technology, the phones, you know, and all those things that we immediately had to, as Robin says, pivot and, and be able to do those things. But we need to do it going forward, not just because there's a pandemic. Everybody should have everything that they need to do the testing and, and to the play therapy materials. And so we're committed to doing that and evaluating it, making sure it happens. And just a couple of other examples are, we have a new committee. It's our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Our board has always focused on diversity, but internally, we wanted to make sure that that's a conversation that's happening with our staff. So it's a staff-led committee, and it's doing important work. We actually have engaged an outside consultant that is helping to make sure that we're thinking through all of the critical issues to make sure that we're doing the best that we possibly can. And then finally, believe it or not, because in my old job as the COO, we've never had an HR person. It was me. It was me. And so we have been blessed with funding to hire our first human resources generalist. And then this year, our second full-time HR person, Tanisha Pledger, Marlee Mickish is our HR generalist, to help us hiring, training, onboarding, all of the things that happen when you have 100 employees. That's a lot of people. So with that, so you see, we have a whole lot going on here at JFS, but I want to leave time for some questions. So with that, we would like to open it up. Our emcee, I'm handing it over to you.
Sounds good. Yes, we want you guys to ask questions. That's why we have all these experts on the call. That's why we wanted you guys to join us tonight. So a few ways that you can ask questions. First, you can chat them to me. You have a chat box down at the bottom. You can send me a chat and I will read it out loud. That's probably the easiest. Another way that you can ask your question is raising your hand. You should have a little icon at the bottom that tells you you can raise your hand. And if you do that, I can call on you and unmute you so that you can ask your question out loud. Totally up to you. We did get a question while our, one of our directors was talking. So I'm gonna ask it out loud. It is for Kristen Jackson, who is our Director of Volunteer Engagement. Someone chatted in while Robin was talking. Oh, the new food pantry, how do I volunteer? So Kristen, can you share a little bit about how to volunteer?
Absolutely. So I will share that we need several more volunteers starting in December when that food pantry opens. Our current, currently, we have about 280 shifts to fill every single month. And in December, that will expand to over 500 shifts. So we really need your support more than we have throughout the last 18 months to get that food pantry up and running and going and to support all of our other programs. Almost all of the programs that you have heard from their teams tonight utilize volunteers in some ways to help support our clients. So and we can really match you with the opportunity that fits your passions and your interests. And the way to get started as a volunteer is to create an account on our volunteer site, which is jfsdallas.volunteerhub.com. And I'm sure that can be sent in the chat. And then you can also just learn more about the volunteer opportunities that we have or talk to one of our staff members about, about some of those opportunities by emailing volunteers@jfsdallas.org or just going to our website and visiting our volunteers page. There's lots of ways to get connected and to, and to engage, whether that is working remotely or working in person in the food pantry or visiting with our older adults clients or doing a myriad of different volunteer activities. So we'd love to have anyone who's interested in supporting our agency in that way.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Kristen. All right. Remember, you can send in your question in the chat, which is down below on the bottom bar, or you can raise your hand and I can unmute you. Your, not your physical hand. There's a little zoom hand you can raise. Of course, if you raise your physical hand, I'll see you. So I can also call on you that way. All right. Another question that just came in the chat, I think, is really for Kathy. Kathy, what are the biggest challenges that JFS is facing? Like what, what is really critical and on our minds right now?
Well, I know with all the staff, our, our leaders on this call, it's gonna be staffing. It is, we have been in demand more than ever, which has coincided with staffing shortages, which you're hearing about nationally. I mean, in every different type of career, from restaurants to, you know, obviously employment coaches and mental health professionals. So we, we are competing with all the other entities and then pop-up entities that need mental health clinicians. So I would say that is our highest shortage. But you have to know, it's also because we're very picky. People who come to our agency must be licensed. They must be credentialed, you know, in whatever their particular specialty area is. They must have years of experience because you're entrusting us with your family members. And so we, we want to make sure that we have those, the highly trained professionals. The other is supply shortage. So our food pantry expansion has been delayed because of a myriad of supply chain issues, you know, related to construction, but also just internally. I mean, things that we need as general things to do our job from cleaning supplies and stuff. I mean, it could be anything. So that's been a challenge. And then as with all of us, just the impact in general that continues with the Delta variant and COVID and managing, you know, what it is that we do to keep our staff and community safe.
Can I say something? Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Thank you, Kathy, for saying that. Because I think what, what I, I would stress also for, from, especially from a mental health perspective. And to your point, Kathy, as I said before, mental health accompanies everybody in every program in every which way in life. We have seen a huge increase in anxiety, especially in children and parents, learning how to navigate a whole new, in addition to everything else, a whole new system in life. It's like an upside down, you know, world. And then in addition, we have just, we have seen over 25% increase in abuse and family violence. And that takes tremendous amount of time and expertise to, to attend to, to address. And so hence with the, with the clinicians that we're looking for and of course, trained and credentialed, as Kathy mentioned, I think those are huge challenges all around. And with it all, it's amazing how we do what we do. I have got to tell you, I'm an awed observer. I don't know how they do it, but they do it. So all I can say is yashakor, kudos in every language possible.
Thank you, Ariel.
I'm gonna do a last call for questions. I have one more that I'm holding, if it's the last one. But again, you can chat down at the bottom. You just hit chat. And, or you can raise your hand, your zoom hand or your physical hand. If you're raising your physical hand, make sure your camera's turned on so I can see you. We do have, I'm gonna read out loud. As I read it, if the person who sent it to me will let me know if I can share who sent it. It's just a nice message that says, Kathy, you and the incredibly talented and dedicated JFS staff have done a remarkable job under challenging circumstances. Thank you for taking such good care of our community. So if that person will let me know if I can share their name, I will. But until then, thank you for your nice words. They mean a lot.
Yes.
Um, the last question that I have been holding is a little bit fun, which is any chance? Oh, the answer is yes, I can share. It was Robin Sacks, who is a past president of JFS, a dedicated volunteer. And we're very lucky to have her as part of our JFS family. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
The last question is, any chance we're bringing back one of our big fundraisers this year?
Yes. The answer is yes, we are. So May 25th, which is a Wednesday, we are having our woman-to-woman luncheon. It's gonna be right here at the Renaissance Hotel that was newly renovated during COVID, all the shutdowns. And we are excited. We are working on our talent. And when we have that special announcement, you will be the first to hear.
Amazing. We are looking forward to bringing that back. It has been far too long since our community has been together in person and we really look forward to seeing all of you. Thank you, thank you for joining us tonight. I hope that you learned something new. I know I talk to these professionals all the time and I always learn something new when I hear from them. So I hope you feel the same. Really appreciate you being here. Please go ahead and take a look again in the chat. We sent out the link for volunteering, the link for the diaper shower and all of our job postings. So if you know someone, send them our way. Otherwise, we look forward to talking to you all soon. Thank you again and have a great night.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Be well, be safe. Thank you.
Bye.